We are recording.
You ready, Mr. Pringle?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the monthly meeting of the Board of the San Carlos State Water Control District which is called the Order at, let's see, what time?
Twelve eighteen.
Twelve eighteen on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. The Forum is present, and we'd just like again to thank you all for coming. It looks like the crowd's been out a little bit since the last meeting. Maybe we can make this one a little shorter. Roll call, Acting Chair Jim Bradford, Jennifer Anzo, Secretary Treasurer Chris Lawson, Attorney Richard Pringle, and Ron Eppenfield has been excused, and we need to now announce our new supervisor, John.
Soluion.
Soluion, okay, try to remember that. Okay, the agenda for the meeting has been distributed, and everybody has it. We do have an amendment to that, to the agenda.
Can I have a minute?
Sure we can. Mr. Eppenfield is not here. We need to amend that on our agenda.
We already have that written.
Pardon?
We have that written.
Yes, sir, actually, in, in, in the revised agenda, like, we did add that.
I see that on the table, and it was last one already, listen.
Not there.
So, okay, we do not need that amendment, and...
Chair's report?
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair's report.
Thank you.
Over the past year, one of the things that we have done is we had bid for bids for engineers, and we have replaced our engineer with Eppenfield.
This is totally whatever, but is it Eden Field or Eden Felt? Because there's no I in his last name, sorry, it just dressed me up.
I'm truly sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
I don't know what it is.
No, he introduced himself as Eden Field.
Field.
Yeah, yeah, Field.
Okay, Shindig's got an I. Well, the sign up there says Felt, A-F-L-T.
I think it's misspelled.
Okay, okay.
It's Field, Eden Field.
I was going by that, sorry.
I have it right or wrong?
I, E.
I know, but it's...
The sign.
Oh, okay.
Earlier in the year, we had an issue with the cleaning of some of the culvert pipes that it turned out that some of the work that had been contracted, the contractor didn't complete the work properly. We in turn have changed the, no longer use the Sweeper Man as one of our contractors, and we're working, we will be advertising for a contractor to do that type of work, and just wanted to let you all know that, the ones that didn't. So we did have a delay in the cleaning of those culvert pipes, which will be done in this upcoming year. We posted meeting signs to try to make it more available for people who forget once in a while what the date is and that a meeting is coming up, so when they're driving home, they can possibly see that and attend the meetings. We did change the location of the meetings, because you guys are here, I know you all know that, but we are now here at the Chamber of Commerce. We also are looking for a new manager out here, and anybody who has, anybody who might be interested can apply, who will formally be advertising that job.
What's it for?
The manager.
Manager for the Water, San Carlos State's Water Control District, and we will put out a job description for that.
Is that a new position?
No, it's a job, it's a job that's been being done out here. We have separated the two positions of Secretary Treasurer and Manager.
What's the manager do? I've never heard that.
We're putting together a job description.
We're putting together that job description.
Can...
Would you like to say something?
Yeah. Steve, there's, there's always been a manager, it's just been a, a role that's been done by the Secretary Treasurer, and it's called in the statute Superintendent of Operations under two ninety-eight, and so it's really just someone to manage and oversee the works and activities of what's going on within the district.
There was a manager first down there at one time, right?
Pardon?
Who was it? Hey, you get a manager out there, was that?
We still have a manager, we still have a manager.
That's separate, that's separate.
That, that's still a separate.
What is the salary of this manager?
That hasn't been determined as of yet.
Full-time?
It's a part-time job.
Part-time manager?
No, full-time.
No, full-time.
Full-time manager.
And it's just full-time.
Okay. I thought we were hiring a part-time manager.
Well, get the job down.
We'll put the job description together.
There has been funds allocated in the budget for that position. That's, that's part of the administration cost.
Okay, that concludes the Chair's report, we're ready for the Treasurer's report.
Okay, Treasurer's report. Most of that I already gave.
That, okay, this is real.
So, for, as far as the Treasurer's report, we, we paid the bills that came due for the month. We have spent, I think we... I don't know what to do, what, what I'm supposed to say, I said it in the annual meeting, and I'm sorry. We pretty much, I summarized it all in the annual meeting, so basically, we ended up at the end of September, if we don't receive any more use connection permit fees or gate remote income or tax income, we'll end up at the year with a million fifty-three, two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars in the funds balance, which represents all the cash holdings for the district. It doesn't include the infrastructure. So of that, we are talk, going to be talking at some point about assigning some of those funds balances for short-term and emergency uses, they will be dedicated for that, and that would be what's held at Northern Trust, which is a little over a hundred and thirty-five-thousand, and we have about eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand at Florida Prime, which is the state fund for our, for our more emergency contingency funds for immediate repairs and or needs of the district. I have a variance report that shows how the, how we ended up with the budget compared to how we started the budget, and the biggest line items that are out of deviation would be the other income, and that is because we have changed how we are accounting for the income. In the past, we would use it as offsets of expenses for like the gate remotes, we would offset the gate expenses, but the new auditor said we can't do that, so we have to report it as other income. Any kind of reimbursements, such as what we received for the insurance proceeds on the guardrail repair for Stillwell from that accident in October of last year, that shows up in other income. So that's why that is so far out of whack, and the other biggest area is going to be drainage. And I'm looking to see anything more than... The roadways, the road budget line item is out of budget because, again, for the repairs that were made for that guardrail, so the cost went under the roads category, so we did not budget for that, and that's why that is, that is line item has a huge deviation, which is offsetting the other income. Does that make any, any questions? I'm done.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Chris. Mr. Pringle, it's your turn.
I have nothing else to say.
That was short, sweet. I thought you were an attorney.
But I'm played out for a Saturday. I do have things to say as the items come up on your agenda, Mr. Chairman, but nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments from guests and public? Everybody still got anything they want to say? No comments from the guests and public? Moving on.
Dina asked me a question earlier. Yeah. She wanted, and, and the Board can maybe respond, she was asking about the prior month's meeting minutes were not up on the website in draft form, and, and wanted to know if that was something that could, could happen, and I said, in the past, they didn't get it put on the website until they had been approved, but if the Board would like the draft minutes to be submitted to the website and as a draft, prior to approval, I can do that.
You know, it's just one of those things where it just came up last month, because I'm like, I don't want to listen to a five-hour recording, can I just read the minutes prior to coming to this meeting? And I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting, I had a bit of Goodyear removed on my head, so I didn't want to show up with a big bandage on my head. But anyway, it's, it's nothing that's critical, it was just kind of one of those things that popped into my head of, it would be nice to come into this meeting knowing what happened at the last meeting without having to listen to a five-hour recording.
So, would you all be okay with that?
Yeah, we have no objections.
I could put a watermark on it? I could make you put a watermark on it, same draft?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, we'll start doing that.
Thank you, Dina. Maybe that'll make it more efficient for everybody.
Maybe, then you'll have less questions.
Only one comment on that, though, would be if you have a question about some knowledge within the draft, does the public send comments back to the district saying, I can hear it that way? Well, well, that, basically...
If she gets an email, you guys, draft, you guys approve it, or they're in town attached, then you guys...
We can approve it outside of the meeting.
Yeah.
You're approving the draft, I guess it's your opinion.
We can.
We still cannot make a joint decision like that outside of a meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I didn't think I was going to say anything, but maybe I'll hear you, maybe it will help. They, they are designated as draft minutes until the Board adopts them and approves them as the official minutes of the meeting, so until the Board takes that action, which can only occur at a Board meeting, a subsequent Board meeting, they're in draft form, anybody can make any comment on them to clarify. Anybody can make any comment on them back to the Secretary of the Board prior to the Board meeting, or at the Board meeting itself prior to the adoption of the meeting minutes. Comments can be made then, too.
And we get to read them the same way you do, but we can't make changes to them until we get back to the Board meeting, okay?
Dina, so I, I don't want to open a can of worms for Chris, I mean, I don't anticipate a lot of people contacting you, saying, tell me what happened on these minutes, but do you see that being an issue?
No, not really, and that's why I started putting, that's why I started putting the recordings up there, which was to give people an opportunity that didn't attend the meetings, if they wanted to listen, they had an opportunity to know what happened.
Got it, okay.
I think, let me clarify, my comment was, somebody's in the meeting and then sees the draft and says, that's not what I remember, and challenges that, that's my comment.
Right.
So, you know, that's, to me, the recording is the real record.
Yes.
Anyway, here for a second, the draft of the quote recording is called the executive summary, you know, you have five hours of line-by-line in the draft.
Thank you.
Right?
Yes.
Right.
But then wouldn't that kind of be a good thing? Because then they can say, hey, I read the minutes, but I remember it this way, and then they can be changed before they're approved or amended?
They do get changed before they're approved, yeah. We approve, when we read them, then we make comments, if you have comments, you're welcome to make them.
Exactly.
Yes, so, so the, so to clarify, the comments, if, if you read something and said, I don't remember it that way, then either through an email back to the Secretary saying, I don't remember it that way, this is the way I remember it, which she would then present to the Board at the time that the minutes were to be adopted, they could fix it and make that part of the approved minutes, or you could come to the meeting, the next meeting, and say, I read the meeting, the draft meeting minutes, I don't remember it that way, I remember it this way, that could be adopted or incorporated as a part of the adoption of the official final meeting minutes, and the meeting minutes are not a verbatim supervisor's solution is correct, it's not intended to be a verbatim record of the meeting, it's primarily intended to encapsulate the actions.
The spirit of the meeting.
That's the main part of those written meeting minutes, is to create a record of the actions of the Board to approve contracts, to take whatever the action is, that motion language is the most significant part, the discussion by the public and all the comments are not nearly as significant for the written official adopted meeting minutes as the Board actions.
Which is exactly what precluded my question to Chris, because it's like, I don't want to watch five hours of grandma grandma, just give me the summary.
Yes, and that's what, that's what those Board written meeting minutes are, intend to do.
I need to get better at encapsulating.
Now, if you can compare it though.
Okay, if we're ready to move on, it's the election of officers of the Board, I have a question for Mr. Pringle before we continue with that, in the past, we've only elected a chairperson, in two ninety-eight, I believe it says that we can have a vice-chair.
Actually, you can have the stat, section two ninety-eight point one-four says you have to elect the Chair slash President and a Secretary, those are the two positions that are required, you have the authority to also add to that minimum list, so if it, if, if it's the Board's desire to elect a vice-chair, absolutely, and that does become significant on occasion, as in the annual landowners' meeting, when Chairman Vogatz was not present, to have somebody else in line. Yes, sir, so that would be a great thing to do, and you can do that, you're authorized to do that.
Now, with, and, and on a lot of Boards, you have the Chair, the Vice Chair, and a Secretary Treasurer as the Board members, the Secretary Treasurer really doesn't perform the tasks like Chris does, is that acceptable, or is that...
So, chapter two ninety-eight acknowledges that water control districts may be a little bit different from the norm, and it even says that the Board, two ninety-eight point one-four says, the Board will elect a Secretary, some suitable person who may or may not be a member of the Board, so it can, it can be a member of the Board, or it can be somebody else that does not have...
Well, Chris, Chris would be the Secretary Treasurer.
Yes, sir, and she's, and that's authorized.
I was intending to replace her as that.
Absolutely.
But I'm not a member of the Board.
Right, and, and the statute specifically authorizes, yes.
I was, I was looking for a third position for the three Board members, so everyone would have the title, so that was what I was asking.
Okay, you, if you elect somebody as the Secretary that is a Board member, then the scope of, under the statute, that, that, they are the Secretary of the Board, they can have, as an example, they can say to Ms. Lawson, you, you do all the work, and I am the official Secretary, so I have to sign a...
I don't, I don't think we're taking her time, are we?
No. Okay, yes, sir, so, so there's...
That was not...
...an acknowledgement of, of a Secretary position.
Okay, we'll just end up with one supervisor without a time.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The lucky one.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open nominations for the, for the officer, for the Chair's position of the Supervisor.
And it's Chair slash President, the statute actually says, makes reference to the President, but we've always called it Chair.
For the, for the Chair slash President.
Yes.
So I nominate Jim Bradford.
I second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Then, motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Seconded, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
And then, everybody's in favor of closing the nominations?
Aye.
Then Chairman Bradford is, elected as Chair.
Next.
Okay, next position is for the, the Vice Chair. Open nominations. Motion to open nominations for the Vice Chair. I nominate John.
John.
I'm going to be just the supervisor.
The lucky one.
You know, we should have just drawn straws.
Okay.
I'm going with counsel advice.
There you go.
To attorneys, we'll be starting.
Trouble.
Trouble. Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, all joking aside, I think I heard two nominations, but if somebody...
Wants to second him?
Yes, sir, either seconds, or somebody withdraws before the other one withdraws, then you're kind of...
I'll second the motion.
So one of you two have to withdraw.
Well, you, you not made the, you made the nominations.
I made the nominations.
Oh, so you, right.
Yes, and...
I guess...
Tell me that she nominated me.
And then Jennifer said John.
So there are two nominations, we'll, I'll get back to meeting series.
Yes.
There are two nominations, a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations.
Okay, and a second of that motion, two close nominations, okay, and then everybody's in favor of closing the nominations, so, Mr. Chairman, you had two nominees for the Vice Chair's position, so call the first nominee's name and see who votes for them, and then see how it goes.
Jennifer Anzo.
So, real quick, the Vice Chair...
So he voted for.
Okay.
So all those in favor of Jennifer Anzo being the Vice Chair, I see one, I see two votes in favor.
And there's only three of us.
Yes, it kind of narrows it down, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. Off the board.
So then, Mr. Chairman, you have the Chair's position filled, you have the Vice Chair's position filled, which is a new position this year, if you want to make a record of note of that, and that leaves the Secretary's position.
We've got open nominations for the Secretary's position, which I nominate Chris, or...
A second.
A second, a motion.
Okay.
Any other nominations?
So we do a motion?
We're going to do a motion.
To close?
To close.
To close the nominations, motion, second. And so, everybody's in favor of closing the nominations, so...
Aye.
And so Ms. Lawson is the Secretary then, Mr. Chairman.
Do we do the same thing for Treasurer?
Those are the officers described in two ninety-eight point one-four, the other position, Mr. Chairman, I mean, if you want to address it, is the Treasurer's position, that's described in a different statute, but that's the fourth position that you often approve, it is, it is a salary, actually, the salary position is the Treasurer's position.
And I heard him right away say aye.
Oh, no. Then you heard money.
Yes, sir, so, and the Treasurer, again, I, I mean, you can do that now, or you can do that later, again, it's a salary position, but it is, generally, it's the position that Ms. Lawson holds, it's governed by a different statute, it says, the different statute says, the Board of Supervisors shall select and appoint some competent person as Treasurer of the district, who shall receive in receipt for all the drainage taxes collected, and the Treasurer shall also receive and, and receipt for the proceeds of the, of the funds used.
Well, let's go ahead and do that now.
Okay, so, that is, again, because it's a paid position, you can, I mean, you can do nominations, or you can just make an action to select or continue Ms. Lawson as the Treasurer of, of the district by motion.
Okay, we open nominations for the Treasurer's position.
I nominate Chris Lawson.
I second the note, second nomination.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, the nominations were closed, and you were in.
Good.
So that's done, so all the positions are filled, Mr. Chairman, they need to be filled.
Okay, moving on, we have the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget resolution.
Yes, sir, I prepared a budget resolution, Ms. Lawson filled in the numbers, it was based upon a discussion at the last Board meeting, this is the budget resolution for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, adoption, the total, after all the discussion at the last Board meeting, we made some, some slight modifications to the budget that, that would be attached to the resolution, and I just asked Ms. Lawson to add a, a total line of the fund balance that comes forward, cash carried forward, plus revenue collected for the year as a total number, and that total number is two million two hundred fifty thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. It is comprised of fund balance brought forward of a million thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars plus anticipated revenue to come into the district this fiscal year of a million two hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars, that's how you get to that total, and then, and then the budget summary also includes a description of the expenses that Ms. Lawson described at the last Board meeting and that the Board approved, and those expense totals, the, no, those expenses totaled a million one hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, which would mean there's a fund balance at the end of, on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to go forward to cash carry forward to the next fiscal year of a million seventy-seven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars, it's all that money. Okay, so that the total revenue in, and the total expenses and fund balance to be carried forward equal, they're, they equal each other as required, that's, that's the budget summary, Ms. Lawson can tell you all the detail about it, and I'll be glad to hand it to her to do that if you desire, and, but the bottom line is, the budget resolution adopts the budget as a whole, and so that two million...
Two hundred fifty thousand, true.
Yes, sir, that number is the number that will appear in the budget resolution, that you adopt the budget as a total budget for the fiscal year, and then internally, as necessary, you can amend the line items in the budget in, during the year.
All right, so, the only thing I would add, because if I were looking at it, the first question I would ask is, well, geez, you just told me that we had a million fifty-three thousand two hundred and twelve dollars in, at the end of the year, but you're going to show a beginning balance of a million thirty-seven, where's the difference? What, what is that difference? And so, what we have to do, according to the auditor, is you look at what you have, and some of that's prepaid, so you take out the prepaid, and then you add what you haven't paid, that, for bills that you're going to pay next month, that should have been part of this year, and so, it's, it's a little pie in the sky, but it, it's the best guess that we have going forward, and so that's how, that's why that number's different.
Go ahead.
Chris, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
On the new tax revenue number, one million two hundred thirteen thousand one ninety-four?
Yes.
Is that an assumption that all existing landowners pay their non-annually?
Correct.
So people are in arrears going forward in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, or they don't pay all that amount, that number could change?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir, and, Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm...
We have the historical record of the confidence level, our ability of making those new tax revenues every year? Like, ninety-nine percent of the time, we get that number?
Yeah, ninety-nine percent of the time, we get that number, we actually are over a hundred percent this year, but we have, that's because we collected some arrears in the prior year, people that are in installment pay haven't quite, they're current, but they haven't paid the...
Paid the last install.
Right, and so, at the last receipt that we received, I had two, two land-owned properties that owed eight hundred and some odd dollars, they had paid a partial amount, so, but I haven't gotten any more revenue since then, and so, yeah, we're, we're over a hundred percent for this year, but that's only because we received some arrears.
But historically, ninety-nine percent, so the confidence level, one, two, thirteen, one forty-four is ninety-nine percent, that would probably get this fiscal year.
Yes. Yes. Now, what, what is the uncertain numbers, the use of connection permit fee, we don't know how many of those are going to get issued this year, the other income includes twenty thousand for the Brooks that may or may not come, they historically have paid, but they're, I think they're... think there was a year that they didn't, at least I couldn't find that they did. Will I sell 75 gate remotes this year? Maybe. If so, then we'll get that $3,750.
You need to start selling ones that fail after a year or two.
So, all those things, all of those things add up to that $1,213,924, because the tax revenue only is the combined 595, 652, and the 562. So, that is why we are ending up actually with a surplus of about $39,000 in this budget.
But it's a paper surplus right now.
It's a paper surplus, because, one, we haven't spent any money, and, two, we haven't gotten any money, but the reason we have that surplus is because we did not include those uncertain items that we might not get, being the use of connection permit, as part of the monies that we anticipate we're going to have to spend. So, if we get it, we're going to have extra. If we don't get it, we should still be able to meet the budget of monies that we have to spend out.
And, Mr. Chairman, also, as a part of your budget process every year, when the auditor finishes the audit for the last year, he will tell us, the auditor will tell us, the actual fund balance, cash carry forward. This is a budgeted number. He'll say the actual number, and then you'll amend, you'll do a budget amendment to reflect the actual number.
We will reconcile it as a certain order.
Yes, it'll be a true, a true budget amendment is what it'll do, but this is the best idea and the best place to start, and is the recommendation of the treasurer to use these numbers for the budget resolution, budget adoption resolution. Mr. Chairman, I can read that budget, excuse me, that resolution title into the record, and then the substantive part, and then, and then you would entertain a motion, a second, call for public input, if you would please, sir, and then, and then you could take action to approve the resolution. It's resolution number 2022-006, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of San Carlos State Water Control District, Lee County, Florida, to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2022/2023, commencing October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, providing for scribblers' errors, providing for conflicts, providing for liberal construction, providing for severability, providing an effective date. The substantive part of the resolution reads as follows. Section 3, Adoption of the Budget for the Fiscal Year 2022/2023. The Board of Supervisors hereby adopts the district's budget, setting forth the total appropriations and revenue estimates and the total expenditures and reserve estimates for the fiscal year 2022/2023, commencing on October 1, 2022, and ending on September 30, 2023, in the amount of $2,250,324. Allowing public input, taking a motion, second, roll call vote to be approved.
Just like we have public input on the budget? Any public input? Then we move forward to...
A motion, a second.
I motion adopt a resolution for the budget.
Second that?
Aye.
And then, so, the roll call vote is all or in favor?
In favor. The roll call is all in favor.
Yes, that's perfect.
Did this, so that Jim would approve, would make the motion, and Jennifer would second?
Okay. I've got one that's blank. We've got it. You're fine. Thank you, sir. We're to the next item then, and the next item is actually, it says budget approval, but it's actually the approval of the assessment, the final formal adoption of the assessment rate.
And that's what I was wondering, that was when I read this.
Yes, sir. That was also, there was substantial discussion at the last board meeting about the assessment rates and how those should be calculated and what they should be. I incorporated and put all of those into a resolution. The resolution describes the assessment rates. It says that there is going to be a maintenance assessment, which will be $547.03 per acre on 1,088.89 acres. We, we, the assessment is charged on the net, so the district does not charge an assessment on the acres, sure, covered by that, that are within the district right away, and then that generates $595,652 of the maintenance assessment, and then you have the 2003 Series Bond Assessment, and this assessment is to collect the principal and interest to be paid this year, and there was discussion about that number being higher slightly, that the assessments would generate slightly more than the actual principal and interest due this year, and that's been the action that has occurred in the past, so that there's some prepayment, in other words, every year has occurred, and those rates were for Unit 1 parcels, the assessment would be levied, is levied at the rate of $580.57 per acre. The Unit 2 assessment for, for Unit 2 of parcels would be imposed at the assessment rate of $348.34 cents per acre, $348.34 per acre, excuse me, and the Unit 3 assessment would be levied and imposed at an assessment rate of $870.86 per acre. Those were the, those were the numbers that were used, and I'm sorry, and that generated anticipated, total estimated revenue of $562,325 for those assessments, for the Series 2003 bond repayment. Those are all the substantive parts of the resolution. The rest of the language of the resolution authorizes and directs the tax collector to collect the revenue for you as a part of the tax collector's activities. It'll be on the tax bill, in other words. It also says that the district has a lien on the property for the assessments until the assessments are paid. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but that's the content of the resolution.
Any questions? No questions?
Okay.
What was the total on all that? What was the total on all that for a year?
There...
The, the general maintenance assessment or the CIP?
Yeah, he ran off, ran off, what, four there?
Those are the CIP, three different rates, based on where your property was located as part of the CIP project.
So, it's not going up?
No, it's staying the same. It's not going...
Did you pay off one of them last year?
Pardon?
Did you guys pay off one of them last year?
The other one, there were, there were two bonds that were issued. One was paid off. The other one continues to exist for another couple of years.
Yeah, that was paid off in '21.
So, did we still get charged out, or is the district paid the bond off?
The district paid the bond off. The board has to decide how they're going to handle the funds that were paid off for the persons who had, still had, who still had monies owing.
You guys, you guys have money to pay the bond we pay every month from the general fund?
So, you can't mix the monies.
You can't mix them.
Can't mix the monies.
They can't come in.
You can't commingle the monies.
That was part of, one of the comments on the, from the audit.
So, you guys paid off one bond, one money, I'm asking.
There...
General maintenance and contingency, right, Judy?
So, let me back, let me back. I think I can answer that question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The, the, the district has, as a part of this budget, reserve funds. They are not allocated toward any particular expense. Those reserve funds can be used by the district for any district purpose. A year and a half ago, or sometime, the board elected to use the reserve funds, unallocated reserve funds, to pay off, to put, I can't remember the amount, but an amount out of reserves, together with the assessment collected for that second bond, to pay off that bond that year, so it has been paid off.
You got the money in reserves, because you're charging enough money to have reserves to pay the bond off, that's how it pays for it. So, you charged them money, it's in reserves, you pay up a bond, but it's still paying for it, that paid off every month.
No, it's not, you're not paying for it anymore. That's, that would be, if there was an additional, if there would be an additional assessment for that bond payoff, that would have to be added to this list that I talked about.
All right, so, the question I have is, how do these reserve money?
The reserve money is just a general fund of the, of the district.
So, it's overage from the maintenance, the, what do you charge for today? I charge for today, Phase 1, Phase 2, I get another bond, another part that goes to San Carlos days. So, you charged me enough money, that part that, to have the money to pay off a bond early that I still paid for it.
You're not paying for it anymore.
You charged me enough money in reserves.
You're not paying for it.
The question I'm asking is, are you charging too much money?
No.
For the maintenance part?
No. The, the reserve, so the reserve money, the board sets that assessment for, for the, for the maintenance aspect, for the general operations of the district. Part of that assessment is for reserves of the district, and those reserve funds can be and were used for the...
I was going to say, Frank, the question, the point I'm trying to make is, maybe you're charging too much money for maintenance, if you have that money to pay for the bond that has not, I still have to give you the money for interest in the bond.
Oh, it's a different one. Okay, so you're saying something differently.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so legally, they have the authority, and they, right.
As a homeowner, you're charging too much money, you get in reserves.
I see what you're saying. He's saying maybe you're charging too much for the, for the general maintenance assessment, if you've got enough money left over in the reserves to pay off, but it wasn't, it was a small payment of a, it was a small...
Almost $70,000.
Yeah.
But those reserves have been built up over many years, 20-plus years, and it was, that was a decision of the board 20 years plus ago, that they needed to have some reserve funds, it was all part of the CIP, and so, they slowly built those reserve funds up. That's why we have the $831,000 in one fund and $135,000 in another.
So, now we have no reserves?
Pardon?
So, now we have no reserves?
Oh, no, we still, we still have.
Over $1 million, you're making, you're charging too much money.
Right, that's his, that's, his opinion as a property owner is, the maintenance assessment should be lower, because the reserves are high enough to pay off the note, and you think the reserve should be lower and...
Isn't that what the auditor said, by state quarters, the method is, taxes for charging too much money for yours?
I don't remember.
I don't think it answers the question.
Yeah, I, no, I don't think the auditor said that, but you could come to a conclusion that, yes, sir.
So, Phase 2 is paid off, is that what you're saying?
The loan is paid off for Phase 2.
Yes, sir.
For the bond.
The bond.
For the bond.
Yeah, the second bond, yeah. There's only one bond outstanding, the 2003 Series Bond is the only one.
So, the loan for Phase 2 should not show up on my tax bill now?
It didn't show up in 20, it didn't show up last year, in '21. It isn't showing up in '22. The board has to go back and determine how they're going to handle...
So, they don't pay that?
Those people that did not pay it off for the monies that they paid back. In other words, for the money they took out of the budget to pay the loan off, they need to go back to the people who still owed money and somehow collect it.
You never paid the first out?
Hmm?
I already paid the first one, you had a reserve, but paid it 20 years too. We're the...
Yes, you're okay?
Question asked, yeah?
Okay, okay. It's good to know. Okay, yes, sir. So, there's a resolution, Mr. Chairman, to set the assessment rates. I've described what those are. Title of the resolution says, reads as follows. Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the San Carlos State Water Control District, approving, levying, and reimposing a maintenance assessment and an assessment to pay the annual principal and interest for the Series 2003 bonds for the Phase 1 capital improvement project for the district's fiscal year 2022/2023, commencing on October 1, 2022, and ending on September 30, 2023, against assessed property located within the district, directing the preparation of an assessment role and providing for scribblers' error, severability, recession, construction, and an effective date. I previously read into the record the, the assessment rates for both the maintenance assessment and the Series 2003 bond assessment for the year, and previously told you that the resolution also imposes the assessment as a lien, no, imposes the payment of the assessment on each acre, and creates a lien on the land until the assessment is paid, although that's for disclosure. It's in the resolution. This is the time to see if there's any further public input, Mr. Chairman, and then call for a motion, a second, and a roll call, vote of approval for the resolution.
Okay, is there any further input on this?
So, the lien would be for Phase 2. Did you guys pay off?
No, sir. Doesn't have anything to do with Phase 2.
Has nothing to do with Phase 2?
No.
So, what's the lien? The missing hole, the offwides?
If you don't pay your taxes.
Shortage, what's the lien for?
If you don't pay your taxes or...
The maintenance assessment in the Series 2003 bond.
Motion's on the floor to...
Soon as you make it, yes, sir.
Okay, put the motion on the floor to approve the resolution, 2020.
The what?
2022, 2023.
Right, that's what I have.
Assessment, assessment.
Assessment.
Is there a second?
A second to the motion.
Sure, aye, call.
Aye.
Forget aye.
Next item on the agenda is the 2021, 2022 budget amendment resolution.
Yes, sir. The last action on budget resolutions for today relates to an amendment of last year's budget to recognize the actual, where's that resolution? Which one? To recognize the actual fund balance carried forward.
We've already approved that.
Did we?
That we did that back in, that was a corrective action.
Okay.
What we were supposed to do is amending, doing the best budget resolution to amend the 2021, 2022 for the actual, actual activity. That, that one's already been approved.
Okay, well, where's that other resolution then?
That's number, did you draft it?
I was, I thought that was this one.
No.
You're saying there's, okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to ask you to continue this item on the agenda. I thought it was this resolution, a different budget resolution that Chris says that you've already approved.
Okay, that's fair. We'll go ahead and continue this to the next meeting.
That was on, yeah, we did that in May.
Okay. All right.
So, we're going to continue the 2021, 2022 budget amendment resolution to the next meeting in October.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize. I have a long one.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the filter swamp. What's with that, Chris?
That was part and parcel of David's comments last month, last month, about the water flow from strike and the filter swamp and whether the need...
The maintenance of it?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's something that we probably need to also put, put onto the October, because we need to speak with that and be able about that and find out how that needs to be managed in the future, and I think that's what David's question was.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment, because a lot of, a lot of research went into that many years ago, and because current board probably isn't aware of it, I think not only do you need to get some input from the engineer, I think you need to get Brian Collins in here to enlighten you.
Okay.
Brown Collin. Give you a good idea, if you sit down, talk to him, he can give you the information on the purpose, what's needed, what can be eliminated, or what, he's, he's the guy. We have to be, not him at our disposal, and he is an incredible environmentalist and biologist beneath, he'll have all the, he'll have all the interests.
Okay, well, we will entertain talking with him, okay?
Yes, he, he is the sinecological...
Easy to use.
I can't remember the... I can't remember the rest of the name, but sinecological analyst.
Ecologist. So Mr. Salucci, he is the one that was instrumental in getting us the filter swamp. We had grants, we were awarded grants to put that in, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, and he has maintained it all of these years. What it does is help filter our water, because our water eventually goes to the Gulf of Mexico, so.
He doesn't really, he helped him...
He helped design it and tell us what the plan is, right?
Right.
He needs to...
Oh, he does maintain it.
And he took us on a filter swamp tour that was really cool, actually, years ago.
Actually, Chris and I took a tour with him not too many months ago, walked around the entire thing.
It's, it's really kind of, I mean, I don't know what you guys are talking about because I wasn't here, but it's really a cool feature for our community. And I think it's only one of a handful in the state of Florida.
I think, I think the question comes back to that we're trying to figure out exactly what job it performs and I, and speaking with Mr. Brown, I know what he is hoping about it, uh, and we just need to know more about what we're paying for, what we're getting and, and whether it's a real asset any longer to the, to the district, that's, okay.
Let me just add, the question might have some problems. That's the way the valve controls the filter swamps, but the entire thousand acres pretty much drains into the filter swamp. So as you control the filter swamp, you're also controlling the amount of water that leaks in twenty miles of salt. So that's pretty much, that's a fact. So if, it's, it's just not as simple as maintaining filter swamps. So maintaining the amount of water in the filter swamps affects everybody's front yard.
So they're ten million to Mexico, they're stuck in there, so that's what weighs them off, that's what they say, there's no sense going into it too.
So do you have any questions?
Okay, can we direct the questions to the, uh, board, please? Thank you. We, we will be, be waiting and finding out what we need to do, okay? Eighty-nine ninety-one, strike lane.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment about that one, if I may. Uh, the landowner has a new attorney representing him. Uh, the prior, uh, attorney was a gentleman named Robert Young, if you recall.
Mm-hmm.
And the current lawyer is a gentleman named Steve Blount, or, or some people may pronounce it Blunt. I, um, I spoke with him, uh, the other day. He contacted my office to let me know that he is the new legal counsel for the owner and he asked that this item be continued for another, uh, thirty days or until the next board meeting so that he can gather information and present it to me, um, related to the, um, uh, his client's position and proposal. And I said I would present that request to you, so.
So what's the board's opinion of this? Do you want to continue to the October meeting, giving them the opportunity to bring these cases, with the board, or really?
I would say time is actually on our side because it gives another month for Mr. Edenfield to give us any engineering perspective of his fencing and gate area that's closing off our right of way road. And what he does with the rest of his fence, that's his business, but I think that's to our advantage, so I would agree. I make a motion extend to October.
No, second.
Okay. Manager selection, we haven't, uh, you want to discuss that? We need to advertise that job and we need to put together a job description for us. So either we put together a committee, which could be formed by a board member and even some of the community to put that together, or we can do it all ourselves.
I think, yes, we did that.
We already designated me to do that, but, uh, in light of that, I was told to hold off because we have the new, the new engineer, the annual minutes, the, our annual audit with Tuscan, supervisor elections, so we've kind of tabled that to October. So in order to put that, um, job description together.
You okay with putting that off to October?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need to do an ad.
The manager's selection's put off till October.
Are you gonna run an ad for it now before the next meeting?
It's, it's kind of a, there, the decision was made, help, correct me if I'm mistaken, the, the decision was made to allow some of these other activities to occur, the annual landowners to, meeting to occur, and you, the new supervisor to be appointed so that the, the su, board of supervisors would be the, the group, the decision-making group, uh, that'll be affected by the decision. So that's why we postponed it. Uh, that, that was the decision, if I recall.
Yeah, I, I also recommend it doing so.
So, so we'll put together, that, there are a couple of steps, a job description and, and review of a job description, assembling a job description. What you may see at the next meeting is that job description.
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I speak? That if we, at the next meeting, put the job description together and, and what we propose is the budget and agree to that and then put it out before.
Exactly. So it's still gonna be a couple of steps, is where I was headed, before there's a final selection made, I, I would suppose.
I motion to postpone October.
Second, ma'am.
Aye. The motion is put off to the October.
Is that, is that open to the public or is that just for residents or what?
Yes.
So you can, you can hire from outside?
Yes.
That's correct.
And actually, think about this, it'd actually be very beneficial to landowners here because if the manager is the right person, he or she could actually do some field inspections of a driveway curbing. They can inspect, uh, cleaning out of the tubes, you know, the, the culvert, they can inspect the long line, different things like that, as opposed to Mr. Edenfield has a much higher rate per hour coming down and doing stuff. If we have a process that everybody understands and agrees with, so it's actually very beneficial to have a manager.
And I do have candidates that have, uh, come to propose interest when I was initially asked to kind of head up that, and they're just kind of waiting for that information to come together so they know exactly what it is that they're gonna be doing.
Who does Mr. Edenfield, I didn't test the name of this company, I, I, is that just called Edenfield?
R M, R M E C.
R M E C.
R M.
R M E C.
Who will the manager report to?
The board.
The board.
Me.
Thanks.
I mean, that's exactly what states the statute to him.
Yes.
Statute actually dictates the manager's responsibility to the board.
Secretary Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, that's a position that continues to appear on the agenda. It's related to the efforts to select a manager slash superintendent. The statute references, the title is superintendent. We're combining them, you're combining them.
No, we're separating them.
So, yes, sir, so that's the one position, but associated to that is the treasurer's position, really the treasurer's position, because remember, you selected Ms. Lawson to be the secretary of the board already. So the treasurer's position in part is what you're really talking about. There, there is a part of the statute that specifically describes the duties of the treasurer, um, and in the, the board's, uh, in the past, the board has selected, uh, Ms. Lawson to be the treasurer and to carry out those duties. It's two ninety-eight point one seven is the section of the statute that deals with the treasurer, appointment and duties of the treasurer of the district. So it's been kind of an open, uh, standing item.
It's in the same dress, the manager's selection.
It is.
And Ms. Lawson did present, you know, to continue on and has discussed on that, so we'll make a formality of that also.
You can, so you can continue that item?
Correct.
And Ms. Lawson, uh, had, had previously agreed to continue to serve in the position until the board made a different decision?
Right.
And so you, yes, ma'am, you can continue that item and then deal with it, address it at the same time that you address the superintendent slash manager. Continue it.
So you, you said that has the description though in that, is two ninety-eight point seven is the description for the secretary treasurer?
I'm sorry, two ninety-eight point one seven.
Is, is the treasurer.
Treasurer.
Point one seven.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the secretary treasurer.
No, just the treasurer.
Just the treasurer.
The board of supervisors in any district should select and appoint some competent person, bank or trust company organized in the laws of the state of Florida, as treasurer of such district, and then receive the receipts and drainage taxes collected, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
So in fact, it could be a third party.
Right, does not have to be.
Doesn't have to be a physical person, it could be an entity that does it.
Yep.
No problem.
Okay, we're putting that off to the next meeting?
Yes.
Second, ma'am.
Yes, I, I motion to agree with that.
Aye. Sewer viewer, viewer proposal, what I, sewer viewer proposal. Uh, this basically came out of what had happened earlier this year, whereas the culvert pipes that did not, were supposed to be cleaned, did not clean, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I had gone out and made a call to, uh, sewer viewer, and the owner's name is Morgan. Um, I'm trying to remember, they're, they're located up on, uh, next to Galley and a Chrysler Plum, what's the name of that road up there?
Andrea.
And Andrea Lane, and, uh, the only reason I did that was simply to get an idea of what the expenses and costs might come out to be, uh, and it turns out that they're right in line with what we were paying for the person who did nothing. So at least this time we get our pipes cleaned, maybe. Uh, I think we got it cleaned the last time. But, uh, the, uh, I would like to see us at least in, in the view of doing everything that we should do right. I think we should advertise that job and see if we get other applicants. And when I say advertise, that should include the fact that board members, members of the public who are here, who knows many companies that provide the services that we need, that they should give us names of them so we can, one of us, I don't mind making the phone calls, call them up and ask them to give us a proposal for the work to be done. And then the board make a decision based on at least three competent companies that are qualified to do the work.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Would, do you want to have, so you're talking about having a competitive selection, doing some thing, do you want the notice on the website only, on the website, and then would there be a local, um...
I don't know, you know, it used to be you used the newspaper.
Yes.
And today, there's so many opportunities out there and I don't, I personally don't know where to direct to that, but I know if we posted on our website, what's the chances one of them are ever gonna read it?
No.
Probably slim to none. And I know we do have one company within our district that, uh, might bid that.
Yes, sir. And the reality is that the word-of-mouth indoor connection in, of, of people in the district with possible vendors
Mm-hmm.
generates a lot more activity than the news press notice or the website notice. Um, there's the, um, uh, B I A, um, uh, and the contractors group, I think, maybe association in Lee County. You might want to contact them and, and let them know what you're looking for to see if anybody is, you know, if they can post it as well. Uh, but you are pretty limited as to the places that you can put an advertisement that would generate a lot of...
What I would think is maybe that we have, Chris, put it on our website, ask in, in turn, and in lieu of putting it out as an advertisement, wanting the contractor, put it more out as asking the residents of our community if they know any, any people involved in this kind of work, that they might put those names forward, allowing us the opportunity to choose from making phone calls and choosing from them. Maybe that kind of a system would work.
It could, and especially as a first step, to see what interest might be generated and then you could decide if you wanted to do something more formal or if you may want to ask those people that have given their name to submit something, you know, a little bit more detailed about a proposal or pricing or things like that, because I think that what you're describing is just a, is anybody interested in maybe doing the work?
Yeah.
Could be the first step, and then the follow-up, if you get anybody, uh, to respond to that would be, okay, well, here's kind of the scope of the work that you would need to do and what would you charge the district to perform that work there?
We, can I get a comment before we?
Go ahead.
I think it behooves us as a board to also ask Mr. Edenfield, one, does he know many companies, but two, what would be the minimum standard of procedure he would expect a company that does and cleans out the culverts, cleans out the pipes, that they don't damage the pipes, they have the right machinery, but more importantly, have a certain standard process of how they clean so it doesn't interfere with how the flow should be? And he'd say, yeah, they should do this kind of auger, this kind of brush head and this of whatever. So I think Mr. Edenfield might be able to actually coach us a little bit before we go out and send people on the scope, the basic parameters of scope, that's my recommendation for the board.
Okay, if I could add just a little bit to that, um, I did talk to Mr. Edenfield about that, and he gave me some parameters and directions that he thought, and, uh, so we would stay within those parameters. We wouldn't sit here at a board meeting and accept any one of the vendors without running it by him first. And so it's not like we're gonna hire them from this immediately. My thing is, let's go out and get at least three vendors competitively, present those to him even, let him make a selection from them, or say they're all equal, you guys choose, okay? Uh, so that, that's where I'm at with that. And so I know that we can probably go on the internet, you know, it's funny, I sit here thinking, how do we really get these people anymore? The elevators are sort of gone, uh, newspapers are sort of gone, and we're in a whole new era of how we get information out or get information. And probably if we just put that kind of a thing on the internet, we'll probably have them all spot up around the Manita Springs area. We can call, and I don't mind doing that if, if the rest of the board members allow me to do that, I'll be glad to do that during the course of the month and call them up on the phone and find out if we have anybody available.
Sounds fine, I mean, I'd just like to see the, whatever Mr. Edenfield said, I'd like to see his basic scope parameter of what we're supposed to look for for any of these companies, because I know some people too in the contract, so I'll call, but I need to know, sorry, what I'm telling them they need to do. Because it's a little different than a plumbing company who offers your septic line.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you go out there and you, and what he said was, he doesn't care if the pipes are a hundred percent clean, I'm probably a little more picky than he is because we're gonna pay to get the work done. I want to make sure they got the rocks out there. As a homeowner and I'm paying the bills, I want to see that the rock's out and all the dirt is out. Uh, as I told you before, or everybody practically, that we don't want to be pumping water out of our ditches into their trucks, so waiting till after the rainy season is over is most ideal. And by the time we get this process done, we should be right there.
And to get somebody in February is perfect.
Yeah. The question I do have, and Chris can answer, that's gonna ask her later, we did not do this work last year, is that money still available for the upcoming year?
Well, it's still in the budget because you haven't spent it.
Then we, we can actually do not just that, but continue an additional project of cleaning culvert pipes this coming year, which could double the number that we had last year.
Well, and, and to clarify, the money that you did not spend last year moved over into this year's budget as a fund balance number, it's not, it's not still designated in that category?
Correct.
The budget that you just adopted.
But it's still above what we would have had, so.
As, as reserves or as fund balance that you can use for whatever purpose.
Even though it's not airworm.
Yes, sir.
But it's not, it's not. Because I believe that if we do more pipes, it gives a better bargaining for the cost of, instead of a company coming out here for five streets, they're coming out for ten and we can get a better rate at that. All right.
And I can't, I'm happy to put something up on the website if you want it, but I need to have information to put up on the website.
Exactly.
I, I can't put, say, job wanted or position, looking for someone in...
I need somebody to clean my pipes.
Yeah.
I was gonna say something else, but I chose not to.
So, okay, listen, listen, we're spending enough time on this, we've got the idea, let's go then, we know we're gonna put this off to the next meeting, so.
Yes, sir. And, and we'll, we'll try to figure out, Ms. Lawson, and I maybe will try to figure out a little bit with Mr. Edenfield's input about, we may just say, Mr. Edenfield, give us the list, and then we'll get that to you, you can say, yep, this is what we want, and then we'll do it. You have a little bit of time before you're gonna want to do the work in the, in the So you have a little bit of time before you're gonna wanna do the work in the in the springtime when it is dry.
Right.
So maybe getting, actually reordering, uh, changing the order of the events to get from Mr. Edenfield first, the description of what you really need.
Well, I I was hoping that, yeah, he's gonna want to go around the district. I was hoping he would invite me to go around the district with him, so that he could point out to me his ideas on what the district needs to improve upon, uh, what our perimeter roads may or may not need to keep them from eroding over into the canal system. Uh, so I wanna point out things to him going on, and I know I sent a pic- some pictures over to you that's going on, and I neighbor in subdivisions where they're dump dumping directly into our systems. And how we might mitigate some of that stuff that might bring money into the district from outside sources. And keep us from having to pay all the bills for cleaning their garbage.
So, sounds like a combination, motion to continue and add it to the chairman's report for the next one.
Okay, can we, should, may I make a suggestion, instead of saying sewer viewer proposal, that we just say culvert cleaning project?
Yes, I would, I would always prefer that we do not name specific companies for doing our work, because that might obligate us to use those.
I don't need.
Give some paragraphs.
Do we have to make a motion then?
Yes, sir, please.
I motion move it to this one?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor of?
I would like to speak a second, uh, regarding new business, um, regarding the date and time of the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We need to address that.
The schedule.
The schedule.
Okay.
And the date.
This has been particularly come to you, because you you're the primary person involved in it. Uh, John scheduled conflicts with our current meeting nights.
Okay.
And so.
Cause I'm on board at another comp- another place.
Well, we addressed that, we addressed that at the last meeting too, that is, that we had to address the schedule, and then you had mentioned about having this facility, you know, the timeframe.
I have to check with them about that, but we do have, if if it really came, push comes to shove, if we've got an alternate location, then we can also use, so. We prefer to stay here. But so.
So Wednesday and Thursday is either those nights.
Okay.
Can't be Tuesday for me.
Okay.
Um, Monday could be, but a lot of people take, you know, might.
And you got holidays too.
Holidays and stuff, so, you know, Mondays I think are bad days, frankly.
Okay.
So we have to do Monday, we do Monday.
So then, the bottom line is, can, would you authorize then uh us to get a, pick a date that is acceptable to everybody? Let everybody know what that is, because this is not a sunshine law violation if we're talking with everybody on the board about, of course, selecting a date and things. So we could all do, pick a date, and then we'll notice whatever that date is when everybody is is in agreement. And we'll have to check off on getting the location and all that stuff. But you're saying, so even before the?
October.
October meeting, we need to get this figured out?
Correct.
October nineteenth.
So that's what I would have as a, as a motion to direct us to find a date for the annual, for the monthly meetings that works for everybody's schedule.
Okay.
And then to that.
For me, I'm open, so it's primarily.
This place is open.
Well, like I said, we could, I will check with that to on Monday. Uh, alternatively, I'm just saying that I can work with any of your, pretty much with any of your scheduling. So trying to lessen the impact here. Uh, I don't know what Jennifer's scheduling is and what.
When's their first sign?
So.
Mr. Prankel was.
So it really comes down to Mr. Prankel and John working that out.
And Chris.
Yeah.
What is that?
I, I don't have much.
I don't, we're not asking, we're not asking you, we're gonna let you work it out?
The only thing I would say is, if you make it too early in the month.
Right.
It makes it tough.
I, we don't get, we don't get the bank statements, like I still am missing a bank statement. Uh, so I would not do it any earlier than the third whatever day, third week of whatever day, yeah.
Yeah, October nineteenth. He's, they're just looking at the now.
We'll figure out.
I'm thinking of the night, not the week.
Yeah.
If the board, if the board would just authorize us to notice whatever, because we gotta do it before the next board meeting is what, is what we're saying.
Well, I make a motion that we investigate this and make a decision.
Authorize me to notice it and.
By the first week of October or sooner?
For for the October board meeting.
Or the end of September.
By the end of September.
We'll get it done.
You gotta give people enough notice.
Yeah. So by the end of September.
It needs to be, yes, sir, so the meeting notice has to be published, post-published, seven, at least seven days in advance of the meeting.
So if you get a decision by the end of September.
Yep.
And we still go the third week in October, or fourth week in October, whatever, that's plenty of time.
But you're gonna be gone for two weeks.
Not two weeks, but I am gonna be gone.
Okay.
But we'll get it straight.
All right.
Yes, no. But but it doesn't have to be done, like if we go the third week of October or whatever, because we need to give Ms. Lawson time every month.
Or the third week of Tu- on a Tuesday now, so we can go third week of a Wednesday or Thursday.
Third or fourth week, yeah, I just wouldn't do it any sooner than there.
No, I don't know.
We got.
So I made that motion?
Yes, sir. There's not a second to it.
All right.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm not.
Sir, okay.
All in favor?
So call your question, Mr. Chairman, and just, everybody in favor of it?
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
So that's a motion to have Richard come up with a date for the next meeting, and then for, after that, we'll have the annual schedule?
And to authorize the noticing, and and then we'll do it. We'll notice it so we can have it without the conflict.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I I do have one question, if if we find a date, when we find a date that works for the month of October, chances are really good that will be a date that will work for subsequent months. You can do your, you can do the meeting notice for your regular meetings if, once a year. It's cheaper to do that, because you just have one, every month's meeting listed.
Keep the consistency.
And then, so if we can find a day that's acceptable going forward, can I do a notice for the annual, for the year? While I'm doing a notice, just do the notice year instead of just a one month.
That's why I was talking.
You know, the only issue we gotta look at, uh, is if you do Thursdays, does that end, does that hit the third week of next year?
No, it doesn't, I checked.
Okay, all right.
I've got a meeting the Thursday of every month, so.
So, Wednesday sounds good.
We'll, 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 we'll find a good.
Make it Wednesday, if you can.
We'll find a good day.
Uh, and then the other question before we get off the subject is, in the past, historically, the board has taken June and December off. If you're planning the annual meeting, or scheduled meetings, does the board want December and or June to be scheduled?
I would recommend against not listing them. It's easier to list them and then cancel the meetings than it is to not list them and have to do a new notice if you need to do something.
My suggestion is, we don't, we don't have enough time, even in the meetings we have, to get the business done at hand that we're trying to accomplish right now. So I think we need to have those meetings on the board.
We could put, it's simple and easy to put them in the notice, then we can always cancel them if we need.
I agree with you.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion?
No, sir, Will, I'll do, I'll do a notice, we'll check it off with everybody, then we'll get it published. Again, we've got even our early October time to uh, to work on this, we'll get it.
Okay.
Next, approve the minutes.
Approval of the bills of the uh.
No, the minutes.
Okay, we have to approve the minutes first.
Approval of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Your motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Aye.
J C.
Moving on, approval of the September twenty twenty-two bills, September twenty twenty-two financial reports. August twenty twenty-two bank statements were not received. So the final August financial reports are not available.
So we'll, we'll bring those to the next meeting in October.
Okay.
Um, the September twenty-two bills were, were signed um and submitted to the prior board members. So John, I'm sorry, you did not get that?
Yeah, that's in.
No, I did not, we don't, we didn't have it, but you had a check detail to show what the bills were.
I just wouldn't do it all there. Okay, all right, so it was, John was asking about the sewer viewers' uh response back to us about the invoice. Matter of fact, I'm I'm just gonna go ahead and bring it up, I'm gonna read this real quickly, so. Anyway, during the uh course of the year, we had talked about how we didn't get certain pipes done, because the company that was hired to do them didn't do the work, but we came to a board meeting somewhere in February or March, as I recall, and uh, the previous engineering firm had approved and said that the work was completed, when in fact it hadn't been even started. And when I say started, they had gone out and shoveled out some dirt in front of the pipes, they had shoveled into the pipes. It looked like the work had been completed. We had a check on the board to be signed for it, and they have, they had sent us a letter recently from Chris at at the former company, who says, uh, has the district approved sewer viewer, which we had not even talked about approving them, we just mentioned them, to come out and vacuum out culvert lines noted from the previous year's inspection? We will need an invoice or proof of this being performed for the upcoming F D E P report. So it sort of feels like we've been put on the spot here, when after that failure occurred, the former engineering firm did not even mention to us at board meetings that we needed to get another company online, get those pipes cleaned out. So if he needs to issue a letter of an extension or whatever, uh, I didn't, he never once told me, and I don't know if he's told anybody else, that if he selects five, five roads, that those are cast in stone to have to be done. He never once ever said that, because I know that I go around this district out here, and there are a lot of roads that have pipes that are equally as bad as that room. And they should have never been left for the long periods of time that they have. I only conclude that maybe this company that we had had doing this in the past wasn't really doing the work in the past either, which left us in the position that we're in. And one of the things that I would entertain, as we're looking for a new company to do that kind of work, is maybe that working with Edenfield, that we do go out and look at every culvert pipe in the district, and it might be a one-time, if we have the money to do it, a one-time cleaning, and then we might be good for ten years. So that might be what we need to possibly look at, especially if we can save enough money per foot for doing.
Identify the worst.
So I just wanted to, because they did send us the letter, and there is a possibility that we're gonna have some sort of a penalty from the F D E P, that we might should be aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. A suggestion back to and or through Mr. Edenfield and back, and or back to Mars Puke would be a suggestion to change the response to D E P to reflect what, to put into the best light possible what has happened. So that, yes, so that maybe you won't be found in violation with the better explanation.
Well, I think it's, you know, when you say that to me, I look at that from a very sad point of view, because if I asked Bill at that meeting if that work had been done, because we were signing a check. I already knew it hadn't been done, but when he stood up and said that it had been completed, what would have been the response to the, to his report to D E P if somebody hadn't looked? He would have concluded that the work was finished, and and they would have sent a report saying it was done. We would have spent nine thousand dollars, and and nothing would have changed anything out here. And I I I reserve the right to believe that possibly in previous years, we might have done the same thing.
I think one of the two, either the current engineer, whoever files the report with uh D E P should be able, may be able to, hopefully should be able to explain what's happening in a, in the light, so that you are not found to be non-compliant, even though the work has not been done. As an example, even to say, um, the scheduled work, um, there was a delay in the completion of the scheduled work, and the scheduled work is placed in, uh, is is to be reevaluated and and performed.
In the upcoming year.
Yes, sir. As 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 required in the upcoming years.
And I, and I don't really want to write a le- I don't want anybody to write a letter and.
No.
I see no, I see no need to point fingers, other than the board knowing what's going on. I don't see sense in pointing fingers to any outside groups. All we need to do is cover.
Right.
And 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 get it done.
Yes, sir. Substantiate so you don't have a non-compliant's funding is all you need. Tell the engineer to do it.
Okay.
I got a question, so just a note to the file about, when you write the manager's description, would this be included in, would the manager be the one scheduling and meeting and greeting and just do a, just be on the premises?
Well, the thought process, the thought process is that that would be part of the manager's job in the future. Although the manager will not be certified or licensed in that area, it will be his job to bring to the attention, to the board, so that we can hire, we can have the engineer, and maybe work directly with the engineer. We have to figure that out yet, because this is the first time going directly that way. But it would probably be part of his job description to work under the engineer and bring him to light as to some of the things he sees out here. And and a lot of that will be done, because he will be talking to people like you and other residents, and you'll, you'll tell him that I got a ditch that needs attention, et cetera, okay? So hopefully we'll get that all covered there.
Everyone just keep in mind minimized activities of the engineer, because it doesn't seem to be complicated to watch Superman do this.
That's it, that's what we're gonna try to do, and part of our compensation for the engine, for the manager is reducing the time of an engineer.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you mentioned D E P, have they cited this for not cleaning out?
They, this hasn't even been presented to them as of yet. This is a letter that has to be presented as a certified thing that we have completed the work. And when that letter gets sent in, if our former engineer has to file it, I just don't want him pointing the favor at us, saying we failed to comply when we don't, when it wasn't us that failed, it was him that failed to see that the work was done. We wrote the check, we were at a board meeting, and I want to ask before the meeting, before we signed the checks, was the work complete?
So just to get this.
This is just to be proactive.
Right.
If you hadn't done your, your, to look into that inspection, the engineer was certified that that work.
Correct.
Yeah, that that was the point of what I said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No liability.
Yeah.
And it only led me to wonder how many previous years that may have been done. Because I believe it was just a situation of complacency, where people got to figure out that nobody was checking behind.
I think Dave, to your point, we can't rewrite history, what previous boards have done or done, have have done or not done. But going forward, we can be much more proactive with preventing as best as possible these future things that could create problems, so we can learn from the history in the past and hopefully make new history.
You used the word board, and I'd like to just correct that, so it's, we hired, we hired an engineering firm to do this work and check it. It's his job to do that. If the board member's job is not to actually go out and physically crawl in culvert pipes and look. But, okay, we do count on residents to keep us up abreast of things, but I've asked, since I've been on this board, everybody if a lot of convenience, if you've ever seen the Sweeper Man. And I gotta tell you, when you have a big truck like out there cleaning out the culvert pipes, I can't believe nobody ever saw. So I think maybe the elusive Sweeper Man.
Did that letter show up from the engineer after you dismissed it, or?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
I I took it as sort of a little stab in the back.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm still, what? This engineer that we disposed of.
Yes.
I mean, my opinion on him just keeps lowering. He was ready to write a letter, which he had no evidence to back up.
Okay.
So congratulations for your placement.
Thank you, let's move on.
Wait.
Did you have, anybody got anything else?
All right, so we don't have, we haven't done the, you haven't made the motion to approve the bills uh and the September financial reports.
Yes, ma'am. Approval to, approval to uh accept, to approve the uh twenty twenty-two bills, financial reports. Motion made. Need a second?
Second.
So you made, you made, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay.
The J, John made the motion?
He did it for second.
Seconded.
John for second, okay.
I vote, make a motion to adjourn the. I vote, make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
One, two, three, four, five.